We stayed a lot longer than we should have.
Well, nobody went to a church.
Well, which one isn't gonna put their hand up? No, we can't do that because that's Bill's job.
Thought maybe you'd call in or something.
It was in overtime.
Thought maybe you'd call in.
Yeah, I definitely thought about it. I was like, yeah.
I got to do it once. It's my second time in however many years I've been on council. I went to a church meeting and that was cool.
It's an exciting feeling. You never, never beat that rush.
That's right.
He didn't severely sheltered them.
What's the best part about being on council? At church meetings?
Yeah. Was able to attend my press meeting while I was out working in PC. I was like, pretty spotty looking. I've already serviced and I was doing it on my phone.
Okay, well, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Not somebody wish to move? Oh gosh, you got three hands going up. I'll have to start off with it. Any discussion on last motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. Let's carry it. Okay. Previous minutes of the council meeting of May the eighth. Any airs, missions, questions?
All put down.
Okay, Judy's motion? Okay, any question on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. Let's carry it. Okay, well, we have a special delegate here, Janice McCollum Campbell. She has been our employee as for over twenty-seven years. I believe in Janice.
She is.
A long time at the company. And all that period of time, she was our chief financial officer. She's worked with five administrators, three mayors, eight councillors, eight councils, twenty-seven councillors in her term. So another testament to being able to put that on your resume for the next job. In addition to her financial attributes, she's also been our office manager, HR manager, and IT manager. So she's wore many, many hats. And she also acted as interim CEO during her transition in 2014. So she's got an opportunity to really broaden her spectrum of knowledge and wisdom. She's well respected by our coworkers and external colleagues, especially our auditor and the IT people. So again, another, you know, feather in your hat to have had our auditors, sing so much praise for what you've done for us these last years, Janice. So she has done payroll for the outside groups of FCSS, Tourism, BBDS, and the rec board, and many more, you know. And she's always been there to assist our staff with all the ones that council seemed to put underneath their umbrella and give back to our staff members to look after. So she's seen many changes, you know, the facility, subdivisions, developments, staff recognitions, grants, budgets, commissions, and societies. You know, during her tenure, we've brought on some societies and, you know, eliminated some societies that we, you know, tried and seen how they work. So, you know, instead of buying a gold watch for Janice, which I'm sure she would have loved to have had, but she decided that she would rather have something that she would like to place in her yard. So Kimmy can expand on that.
So in our, in our staff recognition, we have a retirement fund that we put together for staff. And when I went to Janice, you know, we talked about the gift because we're supposed to work together for that. She asked me, I asked her about the gift, you know, gold watch being usually the thing for retirement. She said she wanted a giant cement turtle. I didn't even know where to find a giant cement turtle. So turns out Janice knew where to find a giant cement turtle and now has one in her yard. And that's really from that, that's something that's hopefully will remind her of more of the good years that she had at the town for many, many years to come. Because it sounds like this thing isn't going to move from where it is now.
So, you know, and, you know, we've been very fortunate, you know, that Janice has been with us and he was shared, you know, Janice with us. So I know that she is looking forward to her retirement. And somebody says, well, what do you do when you retire? And I said, well, you know, I've been busier now with retirement than I have when I wasn't. And, you know, she's got, you know, you have your yard and your granddaughter and your kids to deal with. And the kids to deal with are far more work than your grandkids. But, you know, anyway, for the last twenty-seven years, Janice, we do have a little item here for you. Kim says, don't take it out of the box because if I do, I'll get my fat fingerprints on it. But just to thank you, Janice, for, you know, it says, congratulations on your well-deserved retirement after twenty-seven years of extraordinary services ran in management. Your professional expertise, remarkable wealth of knowledge, and mentorship will be missed. So I'm not sure if you all can see it, but anyway. Anyway, thank you very much, Janice.
Thank you very much.
I think it doesn't say for your valuable opinions.
That was implied.
Yeah, that is implied.
I'm pretty sure it was.
And you get to stay in the press meeting if you want to.
Yeah, if you'd like.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay if you like to stay.
I can welcome to stay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and thank you. And again, I really do appreciate, you know, you sharing your time with us and the kids, you know. I knew you said that when Chase graduated and Bailey graduated that you were going to retire. And then I think he moved it to their post-education and then you even extended it more. So we really appreciate all you've done for us.
Thank you.
The shocking part is how old they were when I started and how old they are now.
It does go by, that's for sure.
Yes, it certainly does.
There was quite a few people here she was taking care of too.
Yeah, we've all had some great wisdom from you, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Janice. We'll see you tomorrow.
She doesn't have to come back.
But she is. Great, that's super. So anyway, we'll move on to the correspondence. So we've got a bit of a parade update of what some of the parades that are. The first one is the Coldale. And it falls on the same night as a, or same day as another one. Where am I at here? Parade dates. So they put together, so the, we missed the High River one, but then Balkans is on the June the tenth, the SPOC days one. Then there's the Ocatoks one on the seventeenth. Seventeenth, the seventh of July was Calgary. But we have withdrawn from it because a couple of us or most of us couldn't make the commitment to go. So we felt we'd pull it. There's Longview, Nant, and Stratmore, Coldale, and Nobleford are there. The same day. Last year, Coldale and Carmegays were the same day. Pitts Butte, Laffbridge, and Cochrane. Now, Cochrane, we got invited until last year, but we hummed and hawed about it and then we decided not to. It's in September, so it's a little easier. But anyway, so those are the dates. And so we need to kind of figure it out. The first one that's coming up the quickest is the June the tenth one. So if we can make it to SPOC days, that would be great. And also, there is a request for the float only on the twenty-ninth. And Culver's and Carton Gate have been recognized or recognized.
So Chris kind of just put together this list based on ones that we participated in before or have shown interest in getting us out. And more than anything, based on the time commitment that it takes for the councillors for this. We wanted to quickly go through the list. If there's a, ones obviously like the Calgary one that we're not going to be able to do, we'd like to get that formalized because then Chris can start all of the paperwork for getting the float to go into the other one. So if there's ones that you definitely would like to do, obviously like SPOC days, we'll mark it down, make sure that it's, everything's ready to go. You guys have had the list for a little while. If you want to go through it right now and pick some dates, or if you want to wait and get back, it would be great, but it'd be nice if we could just put a yes, no on a few of these.
When is Coling?
Coling is twelfth of August.
Yeah, I can't go. Joan's having a birthday party for her mom, she turns a hundred this year, so.
I definitely can't go the twelfth. I can do the Vulcan one, but for the rest, that's going to be a trial for me because I have got issues with my shoulders and I can't raise my hands. So I might be waving down here and I might not put.
I'm going to go Vulcan. The ones after that is going to be more like, yeah, we'll see.
Any other ones for you, Judy, or?
I can't do the seventeenth, but I will be there for Vulcan. Can't do the seventeenth.
I never asked Joan which ones I could go with, so I'm here about that. Good question.
She really has somebody, Rob has got somebody for Monday who friends with coming out. And she was excited because she really saw that's the same time as the Calgary is down here and she could write the float. And she said that was a dream come true. So I think, well, we're calling it Calgary.
Is there any of the ones that we see there that are like a must that?
Well, Vulcan.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it Ocatoks, the June coming to the same day as Timman?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm committed to Timman, unfortunately.
And it's the ladies' two ball.
I have a Calgary in that day.
All the rest I'm good with.
Okay, well, we'll just kind of keep an eye on it and just advance it as we go.
So what we can do from here is, rather than bringing all of the requests to council for formal approval, what we'll do is we'll keep an ongoing list. We'll put it out a couple of weeks before the parade. And we'll do a true email participation. If we have enough, we can go. If we don't have enough, we'll send our regrets. So if we're okay with that, and we'll just try to keep to the data everything.
Yeah.
If that works for council.
Yeah.
Okay. So you can just receive that for information if you'd like.
Yeah, if, we'll do all three of them because I don't know if there's anything on that, on the correspondence. But so we'll move on to the five-two Royal Canadian Mount of Peace Q four report. Is there any comments or questions on that one?
We could see that from Houston. Sorry.
That's okay. I, just when they had their soft and hard vacancies, like they showed zero here, but they're also saying that there is a hard vacancy. But that's for the.
That's career advantage.
So they don't really call that, tough.
Yeah.
Although it's not accepted yet, so it could be part of it.
It's been accepted.
Has it been accepted?
Yeah, he just is working on logistics for the move. Has to sell house and some of those things.
Okay, any other questions on the Q four report? Okay, now we will want to the Ukrainian Canadian Congress.
And this just came by L two all councils, so. We haven't participated in anything like that in the past, so.
Yeah, we never, for any, any groups, that's for sure, so.
We just received this information.
Yeah, we can receive all three of them for information if there's no direct motion to do something about it or something. So that would be.
I think that motion.
Okay, little moves in for information. Any discussion on those motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. Let's carry it. Okay, moving on to cash payment. Because our budget and audits have been done, this cash payment is coming back, so.
So as you can see, we're sitting financially pretty decent spot here, holding about two point eight. We do not have any grant funding held in bank at this point. So of course, because we've expanded the majority of that on our, on our infrastructure projects, so.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward unless there's any questions here.
Okay, if not, somebody wished to move, Barbara? Any question on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question in favor. Opposed, seeing none, let's carry the answer. Okay, year-to-date statement.
Year-to-date, I will talk to Amanda. It looks like we have two budget lines that came up on this report. So we'll get that one, the second one removed. Because council said really all you need is the budget and the year-to-date. So we'll get that amended. Where we're sitting overall for the year, unless there's questions on the specific line items, obviously, we have a fair amount of cash to come in from taxes. And for the four months that we've reported, our expenditures are right where they should be.
Okay, any questions for Kim? Not some wish to move? Judy? Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question in favor. Anybody opposed, seeing none, carry the answer.
It's pretty easy when you've been deepening up the budget for the last two months.
Okay, the next item is the town hall meeting planned for the seventeenth? Or nineteenth, I think.
Nightfall, sorry. So generally, what we try to do is hold this on Monday between the two council meetings in July. The information that we put on there is all the stuff that you've just spent the last several months going through. So mill rate, all that. It corresponds very well with the tax notices going out at the end of May. They're not due till the end of June. So it also gives you, while everybody's thinking about that, an opportunity to engage with you about what's being done with the budget, those sort of things. So last year, it was delayed for a month based on the open house for the development proposals there. So this year, my recommendation would be to have it on the same Monday that we normally do and at the lodge hall. And check availability, lodge halls available. So I preemptively booked it based on if council would like to amend the publication.
Okay, any questions, thoughts?
I'll make the recommendation that council directs administration to schedule and advertise the town hall public meeting to be held on Monday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at the lodge hall at seven p.m.
Okay, any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I will call a question in favor. Opposed, none, let's carry the answer. Okay, moving on to the donation to the Bridges for Kids Rainbow Society.
Berries for Kids?
I think that's it.
Berries for Kids.
Berries for Kids, sorry.
So as you've all had a chance to read the report, we've done this in the years past by donating a portion of this to the charity, they match a portion, so to fifty percent. So essentially, what it does is by council taking seventeen, or seven thousand dollars from the one-time grants to organizations, they do as part of your budget, and putting seven thousand to it, it gives them an extra thirty-five hundred at the end of the year. We've done this the last several years and it's been very beneficial for Rainbow Literacy. I do want to point out that although councillor Moore Coffey's name is on the letter, this is a request from the board, not the executive director, to sign that on behalf of the, with the, the official signing of two, so.
Okay, any thoughts, questions?
I can make that motion that council authorized the donation of seven thousand dollars to the Berries for Kids Charity Golf Tournament to be funded from money allocated to Rainbow Literacy as per policy F dash zero six, recurring grants to organizations in twenty twenty-three operating budget.
Okay, any questions on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question in favor. Opposed, let's carry the answer. Okay, moving on to the commercial development incentives. We have to do this on a yearly basis, even though we approve them and some of them last longer than one year. So we have to do that on a yearly basis.
Yeah, so council's had a chance to read the report. You've been involved in passing the motions, which I've attached for these. You can see where they are. We have one that's in the last year, we have one that is a one-time, one that is just starting, and one that's halfway through. Because of the way that you worded the incentive policy, it has to be done every year through motion of council, once you've passed your budget and mill rate. So now that you have all those done, we've put everything together. In total, we'll be refunding five thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and seventeen cents. And the breakdown of what that looks like has been attached at the back. And it's only on the municipal portion. You cannot refund the school lodge or.
Okay, any thoughts, questions? If not, somebody wished to. No?
Yeah. Should we stick to our word?
That's good. So Will moves this one, any question on Will's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Were opposed, seeing none, let's carry the answer. Okay, moving on to the show home incentives.
Again, this is an incentive that council put together as part of the development policy to allow for somebody to do a spec house and use it as a show home to face their intelligence sold. It did have to go through the application process through the MDC so that change of use to a show home. So it'll also, when it's sold, have to go through the change of use back to residential R one. And, yeah, very straightforward. The assessment came in, it's only on the improvement portion of the assessment. And on this one, it's a total of one thousand ninety-three dollars and eighty-six cents. And, yeah.
And use the name built.
It's just finished right now. So, and that, that is reflected, and it's worth mentioning, that is reflected in the overall assessed value. It's not even assessed at full, full value yet, which is the applicant's opportunity to do that, so.
Okay.
Just a note that MPC, who did vote in favor of that.
To more than.
Yeah, just that it wasn't unanimous. Just because it wasn't, it was a little bit late and the builder used it before, so.
Yeah, and I think that we're going to see this more and more all the time too, you know. I mean, that's what the philosophy of incentive is, is to try and get them to build a house and then, you know, start turning them over quicker. So there is a bit of a hassle for them. And so, I mean, administration can talk to them pros and cons to have it turned into a show home. And then again, they have to take it back out of the show home to sell market. But, you know, it does give us a new home in our, in our community, that's for sure.
The big conversation was not getting full value of the incentive either. If the whole house is only assessed at a hundred thirty and it's a three hundred thousand dollar house, when you sell it, you're not getting it. But that was his choice with the application. He's hoping to have it sold soon, so.
Okay, so any discussion on, more discussion? Not somebody wished to make a motion? Will? Okay, thank you. Any question?
His arm's broken.
Any question on Will's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question in favor. Opposed, seeing none, let's carry the answer. Okay, Marcus Foundation, letter of support.
So for those that were able to attend the meeting, you have quite a bit of the background. I've added comments to this report for those that weren't in attendance. Really, what Marcus Foundation at this point is looking to do is to do their CMHC application, their application to the Alberta Senior Housing for funds to start the project. Able to email out that report to everybody so they may have a chance to review the capital portion of this project, should it be successful as anticipated. Right now, the town's portion being a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in a one-time. And then based on the modeling, our ongoing requisition of seventy-nine thousand dollars, pending operational changes, should manage the lodge going forward on an annual basis. So with that, for the application, they're looking for letters of support and more than just the normal letter of support that we do, with a motion number, which would be if you agree with the recommendation here, with a motion number saying that you're, that you will support this and are able to financially contribute to them at whatever that level is to the one point five.
And we have, how much do we have set aside for it?
We don't have any set in a specific reserve at this point. So if it was to happen tomorrow, it would have to be pulled from contingency reserve.
Okay.
And we have enough in it if it had to be.
We do.
Be tomorrow, but it's not a, theoretically, it'll take a period of time to process the whole thing.
I missed the meeting, so what's happening with the whole lodges system to build?
It's, it'll be quite a ways away to, this is to start the process of applying for funding. And I probably should just, Judy, Judy can kind of maybe explain a little bit more to it, but.
Yeah, it's to see if we can get the funding. So the AHPP, Alberta Housing Projects Program that they have, we hope to get eight point nine million from them. So we need to apply for all these grants, but we have to have these letters of support in place. So no money will be taken from the communities, any of the villages at town, until further down the line. So it would be a good year before we would request the funds. And so we just have to show that we can put our share in and receive the grants. So we're all ready to go with the grants. We just need these letters.
And your quest, sorry, the request on your, on what's going to happen to the existing lodge, I think is a question that's been asked to them as a foundation for a long period of time. And I think they're looking at different processes, but, you know, it's so premature to make any commitment until they, they know where they stand of building a new facility. And then they'll start that, that process on, but, you know.
The most informal conversation and best was they would sell the old facility.
And again, too, you know, the advantages, I mean, you know, what year was it, sixty, no, sixty-four?
Sixty-three it was started and they moved in in sixty-four.
Yeah. Anyway, early sixties, you know, long before you ever thought of, you know, so.
And your parents.
Yeah. But, but again, you know, it, it has lived its, and that's one thing that we've talked about in the past, is our community has been very lucky because we've had school wards and hospital wards and, you know, that have kept the facilities up. And sometimes that's a detriment because some of them have lived, outlived their life expectancy. But doesn't mean that the facility is in bad shape because they've kept it in such good shape. But, but again, you know, the operating costs go up and the facilities and the size and everything else. But go ahead, Judy.
Yeah, right now, you can't get a wheelchair into any of those rooms. So we cannot allow any wheelchair people into the facility as it is currently stands. And maybe you've been in there when you've been trying to take people out on that back wall, that you have to lift the green way up and bring it down over that pony wall. And we're, we're thinking that with all the technology nowadays and with better windows and that, that our costs won't be as great as this old building that we currently have.
So anyway, this is a letter of support, but it also does commit us as a financial to.
I would like to make the recommendation unless there's.
You venture?
Okay. Okay, I'll make the recommendation that council provides a letter of support as presented, pledging the town of Vulcan's respective share of one million five hundred thousand dollars required for the Marcus Foundation application to the government of Alberta's Affordable Housing Partnership Program.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question in favor. Opposed, seeing none, let's carry the answer. Okay, moving on to the declaration of Alberta Health Week.
Report's very straightforward. I thank Lyle for bringing this board from the committee. This is the reason why I don't walk downtown before I come to work in the morning. But he called me right after their meeting and asked for the declaration. We got it. I then put it through the process, the county has put it forward. They did prepare a joint declaration for both the town and the county. County's approved theirs, so it's a request for council to declare that week and then to allow the mayor to do the joint proclamation.
And thank you, Kim, for taking care of that. I know I caught you off guard, but you handled that through town. And thank you, Kim, for taking care of that. I know I caught you off guard, but you handled that through town and the county and guided me through the process, so that was good.
Okay, so is this your motion, too?
Yes, I made the motion that council declares May twenty-ninth, June second, twenty twenty-three, as Alberta World Health Week. And that the mayor execute the joint proclamation on behalf of the town of Vulcan.
Okay, any question on Lance's motion? Hearing none, the favor. Anybody opposed? Security announced. Okay, moving on to the library board.
So as councils were from last meeting, when we had the discussion about having all of the board members have their, uh, their dates all fall for, uh, re- all at exactly the same time, Connie took that back to her next board meeting. Had a couple of our board members say that they would like to do an additional one-year term so that they can stagger the terms of when all their terms expire. So really what the request for council is, is to extend for an additional year for Deborah Wyatt and for Janice Koby.
It makes sense if they can do it, if they can stagger them so that, you know, you're not nailed with everybody falling off or at the same time if you can do it, so.
Continuity.
Yeah.
So you don't lose everybody at once.
Five.
You have to do separate motions for each.
No, we can.
You can do it as well if you'd like. And I'll put it there so you can read it if you'd like.
Can I make the recommendation that council approves extending the appointment of Deborah Wyatt to the Vulcan Municipal Library for an additional, uh, library board for an additional one-year term ending June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five? And that council approves extending the appointment of Janice Koby to the Vulcan Municipal Library Board to an additional one-year term ending April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Any question on Will's motion? If not, it tells the favor. Posed.
That's way longer than I determined.
Hey, yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on to the microtown.
So as you heard at the last meeting, uh, Rita's, uh, reaching out and trying to find information on trying to recruit a, uh, hotel to town, we, uh, for additional lodging, uh, she contacted the county, and they're interested in this as well, uh, for economic growth as well. Uh, so our informal pre- now, mentions in the admin reports turned into something going through their last council meeting, and they're very supportive of it. We do have a significant amount of money sitting in the, uh, VBS fund that's being wound up, uh, their books have been finalized, so that, uh, the money, the outstanding funds can be returned to the town, the county, and villages. So we're anticipating our, uh, portion of that to be fifty-five thousand dollars. So the county actually on their side decided to split the cost of this feasibility study, uh, fifty-fifty with us at ten thousand, and they're drawing their five thousand from the house funds. And our recommendation would be to do exactly the same because that was economic development funding that we originally had invested in the, uh, in two, uh, VBS, so. If council would like to move forward with it, it is a step forward on getting that data that will help not only win, but anybody else that may be interested.
Uh, that ten thousand dollars, uh, be split, what about this, uh, six thousand retainer?
That's just the, that's the deposit.
So does that come?
Yeah, so the overall cost of the entire study is ten thousand, they want sixty-five upfront to start.
Okay, so it's total ten, not six?
Total ten, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it's after the whole thing.
Well, sometimes it's nice to have a little money held back in case you want to negotiate some pieces of the, uh, of it in the, and before you finally accept it. Now, what we did is put a recommendation that, uh, to, not to exceed five thousand dollars, so we have the funds from the county. And again, uh, there was something in the indemnity that, uh, we need to, the county had discussion on it. We'd eternally had conversation. We didn't put it, to put it as part of the motion because we're already go- we're already going to have this discussion with it. It kind of tied us so that we can't use it for marketing, and that's the whole purpose of us using this, so we're just gonna make sure to get that to have amended so that we can, uh, so we can use this to, to market.
Okay, Judy?
Well, I'll make the recommendation that council approve partnering with the Vulcan County to complete a rate and occupancy study conducted by Hospitality Valuation Services at a cost not to exceed five thousand plus taxes, with funds to be drawn from the BBDs wind-up fund.
Okay, any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, call the question in favor. Anybody opposed? Security announced. Okay, thank you. Moving on to rehabilitation of Avenue Ashfalls.
So through the budget process, we had conversations. Stu brought this up, that he'd been bringing this forward after the budget had been approved. He received a quote for doing the two avenues that, uh, were of high priority. He based the priority on deterioration, structure underneath, those sort of things. As, uh, as council discussed, there has been many different things tried over the years for reskining. Skinning right on top of the asphalt, pulling the asphalt off, actually redoing three feet down coring. Stu picked two avenues that don't have infrastructure under them, so that, uh, you know, payments laid down, hopefully it'll be there for thirty, forty years. Uh, his biggest concern is base work, so, uh, but this is an overall cost, depending on how much, uh, other conflicting projects there are. This would be a turnkey to have them come in and do all the work. Stu has talked to them, and they're willing to work with. So if they're, if we could have it all repaired, the cost would go down significantly. Uh, that way, we can also, if we dig into one, we find a soft spot in an avenue or, or in one of the intersections, we can also get that repaired. And, uh, so, he's put together this proposal, like, again, uh, you guys have identified it in your strategic planning documents. You actually put a hundred thousand into the reserve for streets for this project. So the recommendation would be if council's comfortable with, uh, doing a relay of the surface on those two avenues, that, uh.
Okay, yeah, question, go ahead.
We missing three thousand, like, what was it?
Uh, it's a hundred and thirteen, but we don't, uh, we all, obviously, we get our GST back out of that as well, so, um, we, we based it on the hundred and seven and change. If we did have to, it's giving some flexibility if we had to do some base work for it. And again, the intention is not to spend all, that, that, that is, if we have Stu tied up with a dozen other projects and he can't get anybody in here, he can put the funds directly to it. One of the things that came, will come up in my administration report that Stu and I talked about this morning, is with the company that's coming in, they're flexible to do others, so he may, um, to get them to redo a bunch of the Patrick there of work that we have around town as well. And you will see in my report, I've been talking to Transport Canada about the Second Street Crossing, they want some payment work done in there, so we'll probably, uh, tie this to this project as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any choice now?
I'd like to re- thank the recommendation that council approve, approves Public Works' request to rehabilitate the asphalt on Sixth Avenue North and Third Avenue South as presented at a cost not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars, with funds to be drawn from the street's capital reserve.
Okay, any question on Will's motion? Hearing none, call the questions in favor. Posed, seeing none, carried out. Okay, moving on, thank you, to the Spock Days' request.
So this is, uh, essentially the same request as last year. Chris and I had a conversation, uh, we apologize that the mound shows a soapbox derby. Obviously, they're not gonna be doing that this year. That's not a part of the request, but the Taste of Vulcan and the parade route remains the same. The only thing that has changed from last year is the, uh, sponsorship. They have included the package, but then, then requested that you guys consider it. But that was also when you took on the additional, uh, work with the, allowing, uh, community services manager to organize the ball and the parade, whether that would be consideration for the, uh, for the, uh, sponsorship. If you would like to do sponsorship, uh, I, we could do that as an additional motion on this, but we did it for everything that we, uh, the recommendation was for everything that was, um, discussed in previous years leading up to this.
Okay, any questions or thoughts? It's theoretically one of Vulcan's only, I shouldn't say only, we have the, the Vulcan coming on up, too, but it's the one that puts on the parade and other events that follow all that stuff, so.
In, in the past, you've only sponsored, uh, it's varied, but the, the average sponsorship has been in that five hundred dollar range. And as you know, the additional services that we're providing were equated to about thirty-six hundred.
Um, I'm, I'm fine with our, uh, work that we provide and people to.
Cash, right?
Cash.
I, I remember the opposite opinion, I think we can still get the five hundred for Spock Days. I don't know how badly they need it, but, I mean, I'm sure our support, I mean, we show our support in many ways, but it's just another thing, bringing people to town.
Okay. Any questions on the either way, or?
Go for it.
Yeah.
So, so I do.
Go, 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 Judy.
Have we, have we sponsored before?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, financially, yes.
Every, every, every year we sponsor with, with cash in the, and the average has been five hundred dollars.
This is the first year, though, that we've ever had, um, somebody pull out the amount that costs us as a municipality to, you know, participate in. And we did that partly because we wanted everything out there, you know, how many, like, when we help with the Tin Man, we're gonna put a cost to it. So that you can kind of sit back and say, you know, where, but on the other hand, um, so it's not much different than we've ever done with the sponsorship either, so.
That's good to know.
Okay, yeah.
I'm just, uh, what you said about the community service manager, what you know with it, is that we haven't done before?
We haven't done that.
Well, we have.
Well, yes, we helped organize a parade one year, but not officially through the town.
Not officially.
So when they made motion, when you guys as council made motion to let that time, uh, Chris equated that to about thirty-six hundred dollars in additional hours that we're gonna go to organizing the ball tournament, which we haven't done, well.
No, we have.
We've done years past, way, way back, we got out of it for a long time, and now we're, we're back, because it was done, it was a record.
Yeah, it's been, it's been done through the municipality for, for years, not to the extent or to the paperwork extent of what is being done right now, but. But Bonnie has participated in the meetings with Spock Days for years, and Channing was participated, and, um, their staff participated, not officially participated, yes.
Their CPO is gonna be there.
Yes.
Yeah. But it's, it's no different than what we've done in the past at all.
What can be done with this is, uh, for the regular, uh, recommendation, uh, council could move that as motion, and you can do the, uh, sponsorship as a separate motion if you would like.
Okay.
I'll make a recommendation and that council approves the Vulcan Spock Days Committee request for temporary street closure from nine AM to three PM on Saturday, June tenth, twenty twenty-three as follows. Taste of Vulcan, First Avenue North, between the alley behind the county, to First Street North. The parade route as represented, presented, including intersections along the parade route from ten to eleven AM. And that council approves the participation at the Starship float and any members of council who wish to take part in Spock Days Parade. And that council approves the Vulcan Spock Days Committee request for services as follows. Use of barricades for the parade route, picnic tables and panels at the Virginia Mitchell Ball Diamonds for the Beer Garden. The use of the Lewis Ware Pavilion Arena, um, Virginia Mitchell Memorial Park area and Ball Diamonds. Virginia Mitchell, um, Memorial Park Campground to be opened for expanded camping for baseball players. The support of the CPO for the event, the use of the Vulcan Arena, and directs the community service manager and Public Works Forum to coordinate with the Vulcan Spock Days Committee for these requests.
Okay, so Judy's made this motion. Any question on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions in favor. Posed, it's carried out.
Now, for the discussion of, uh, sponsorship, in the past, as, as I said, you have sponsored, uh, on average, five hundred dollars. Through the sponsorship package for this year to stay at the equivalent would be at the commander rank. And that, uh, if you were to approve this, uh, where we've taken the funds from in the past is from the one-time trans to organizations, which currently has a balance of three thousand.
They're not, like, are they gonna be from their local and stuff everywhere because of all the other stuff that we're doing?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if I wanna make my motion anymore.
Okay, lots of two. There's a, there are.
Well, I, well, I, I get where you're coming from with your almost emotion. I think, I think we're doing pretty, I think the town's contributing quite a bit to this, and perhaps we might be something further on down the year where we could, uh, spend that five hundred dollars to somebody who might need that a bit more. So, I mean, I, I certainly support this, and all my businesses contributing to that, but that's just my thoughts.
Judy?
I think it'd be beneficial to know how badly they need our, I mean, if they need it, I, I'm not opposed to giving it, but it, and you can always use it, I know that.
And, and, well, for the record, uh, Chris did bring it up, that, you know, council had discussed that this was kind of, uh, the additional stuff, maybe in lieu of the sponsorship. And, uh, the wording that I got back was, it never hurts to ask, so throw it out there.
Yeah, and, and they have, they have lots of organizations that do, uh, sponsor in lieu of cash, I think. But I think, you know, and I have seen their financial side. I don't think this'll be a real hardship. But, um, on the other hand, you know, it, um, it is something that, you know, some municipalities participate in theirs substantially more on both sides. But, um, I think that, you know, they're not in very successful. It had some good success we used. We've got good volunteers and good help.
Yeah.
Okay, any, no, no motions, so we can move on, unless somebody wants to make a motion. Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to the Tin Man Beer Gardens.
So this is something new. Uh, you've already approved, uh, all of the, uh, support work from Public Works and, uh, Community Services for the Tin Man. Uh, it's going ahead. They did want to try something new this year to try to get people to stick around and, uh, and stay in town a little bit longer. Uh, their proposals for beer gardens, and, uh, it's in the corner of the grounds because it is held on town property. Uh, you guys do need to make a formal motion to allow for it, uh, just like any other group. Uh, this is something new. They're throwing it out there for, uh, council's consideration. We do it for, uh, several other organizations at their events, uh, and it sounds like they've got a community partnership to do it. Based on it, unlike, uh, Spock Days where, uh, it's been happening year after year, we just, uh, put the motion together that they operate on the grounds, uh, confined within the grounds, inside your motion, and as per ALCG guidelines, so they would have to get the liquor license, uh.
And, and our public groups will have to.
Uh, the additional.
Additional. Like picnic tables and.
Tables, and we already have barricades there, so, and their volunteers send them up.
And their volunteers will clean up afterwards. I'll make the recommendation.
Okay, well, what's this?
As it is, well, with the ALCG guidelines and, uh, with the specific timeframe of, uh, ten AM to four PM.
Okay, any question on Will's motion?
Do you want me just to read the motion?
Sure, if you'd like, sure.
Go on, Tim. I will make the recommendation for the motion that council approves the Vulcan Tin Man Sports Association request to operate a beer gardens on the grounds of Vulcan Lines Community Pool. As for ALGC guideline, uh, ALGC guidelines on Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, from ten AM to four PM.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. Any opposed? Seeing none, it's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to community reports, Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse. Any questions on their draft minutes from April twelfth? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to SEWAS executive minutes, April fourteenth. No questions on that one, we'll move on to ORSC. Executive, or, yeah, executive meeting of April thirteenth. Okay, no questions on that one, we'll move on to FRESKS. Okay, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to Marcus Foundation Housing Meeting Minutes of May twelfth.
It was mentioned at that, uh, that meeting that, uh, now that they've got the formalized housing committee with, uh, all of the contractors, uh, consultants together, that we'll be getting regular minutes from them as well, so.
Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, I think this'll be a great project. Okay, moving on to MPC's draft minutes of May sixteenth. Okay, any questions? Hearing none, there's Flying Club minutes of the eight, oh, oh, golf course, sorry, no, yeah, I apologize, I jumped the golf course, golf course, of the May sixteenth.
Um, are you concerned about the membership coming down?
No, because we've had, it kind of offsets itself, right now we're seeing, okay, yeah, because we've had some new ones come in as well. But unfortunately, we're, we are senior-based, and so we've had, I think, six requests, refunds already, one bought it one day and then requested, but it is curated from the start date of golf, so they might not get it all back.
Okay, thank you, Judy's. Okay, now, we'll move on to the Flying Club April eighteenth. Okay, then Flying Club the sixteenth, noon.
Just didn't know, didn't we do that with the? Looking at having flying breakfast.
Yeah, I saw that, there was a app, and you're like the Balkan, or, so, that's good, it's nice to see it come back.
Have you attended that?
Have I? I, yeah.
It's very good.
Yeah, it's very good.
It's lots of fun, I mean, and, you know, they, lots of guys will fly in, and then you wander around, look at all the planes that come in, and, uh.
Used to be tied with joy in China as well, so you could go up for breakfast and then down to China, so you do that.
This is tied with.
It is, it is, yeah.
And, uh, Leffbridge Flying Club is a partnership in it, so.
You know, one member is part of that, and they're paying down there.
So all those planes will be there, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's a great time, you know, I mean, there's, um, a lot, sometimes they'll have, you know, thirty, forty planes coming in. I think that that's probably one of the, one of the other complaints that you might hear is that, you know, you'll hear all the planes coming in, but it is kind of neat to see them all lining up and.
They have to see a lot of people attend that.
Yeah, no, it's 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 very well done, they they do a good job, and, uh, it's it's really appreciated to see, so thank you for reminding us of that. So any other question for the Flying Club ones? Library Board Draft Minutes. Okay, uh, any questions on that one? If not, somebody wish to file the reports? Oh, sorry, thank you, Bert. Great, any discussion on Bert's motion? Hearing none, we call a question, was it paper? Opposed, it's carried unanimously, thank you. Okay, moving on to verbal reports, Councilor Magnuson.
Okay, well, I've had MPC, which is the document, it's their, uh, Flying Club, or, I think we called it Flying Club, yes, that's, I suppose that that as well. The, uh, we had our attraction, document attraction and retention committee meeting, uh. Attended. Attended that, uh, where, I think they're they're down, but what they're trying to do is they're looking for, uh, getting another doctor coming in internationally. And, uh, one of the things they're looking at is incentive, like to help with, uh, moving expenses for for said doctor. So it's stuff that they're they're looking at. They did request to talk to the town about it, but it's actually through the.
Yeah, health, to the wellness, uh, Health and Wellness Grant Committee.
Right, and so, so once again, thanks, Kim, for steering us in the right direction there. I also went to the Marcus Foundation, uh, meeting at the, at the Legion, and, uh, I just have to say hats off to that committee. I think you guys have done a lot of work to it, and our 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 community, I think the whole county's gonna benefit through it, and it's exciting. There's been talk about this for years, exciting to see some actual, uh, progress with that, so, like, cause the hats off to these guys, so. And, uh, and just a note, you've seen in the library minutes about this Balkan Business Crime Watch group. Uh, we're gonna try and get together, uh, tomorrow evening at the Senior Center, and it is strictly for businesses in town. And just to talk about how we can better communicate with one another, uh, you know, with with issues that are that are going on in town, so.
Okay, any tip, Mel?
That's it.
Any question you want? Thank you, Councilor Smith.
Councilor Smith, I attended our the press meeting three weeks ago, uh, since then, I've kind of been away, firefighting, doing all kinds of different stuff. So I missed the Markmee's foundation meeting and the last council meeting. That's pretty much it, I have an informal meeting tomorrow, and that's it.
Okay, any questions for Will?
Okay, I just wanna say, thank you for being a firefighter, I mean, that's a, that's a heck of a job, and I think we could, it's scary what's going on up north, and I think it could help down here too, so. Keep keep training, Chris, we think we'll be right here.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mel. Okay, Councilor Samson.
So, on, excuse me, May eleventh, was that communications meeting for the Marcus Foundation? We got really good feedback, we had some namesayers that understood what we were looking at, so I I think it was quite well received. So thank you for those that could make it. I know that county has approved their request for monies, and as well, we've received one from Milo today as well, so, um, they're starting to come in. Um, May twelfth, from nine to eleven, we had M three development and Cory from, um, JMAA all meet at the Peter Dawson Lodge. We were there for two hours with meetings and, uh, looking around the lodge and pointing out, like, the stove is, what, one or two years old, so what do we want? And this man doesn't write anything down, it's just in there, he's quite quite a smart gentleman, I think we're lucky to have him. Then we went over to the the green field, and, uh, Kim met us there, so he could tell, um, Cory where all the services were. So, um, I felt it was a very productive day, day, uh, May fifteenth, we had, um, Victim Services ABM. We started the meeting with a closed session, and, uh, when we came out, we made a motion, um, to the matters that were discussed. We went over the budget thoroughly, um, had elections, and, uh, they will be putting on the golf tournament again this year. So, um, looking forward to that, I said I cannot help, I need to overload it, so they are, you know, I mean, we're there, but, yes, they've got a lot of volunteers set for it. So hopefully, come up to the, to the RCMP Gifted Services Tournament, it's always a good time. May sixteenth was at the MPC meeting, um, May sixteenth also was when we had the golf meeting. I don't know if it was mentioned there that we've applied for grant in amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, we hope that we can get accepted for that, that would help with the sewer, or complete some order of, um, the tee-off boxes. We had the number one tee-off box was supposed to, um, be ready for the hundredth anniversary, it doesn't look like it's gonna get there, which is unfortunate, because as of signature, um, hole eighteen is our signature, but number one was going to look really good. But they had a lot of setbacks on receiving materials, so unfortunately for that, so. Um, we are going to start off the tournament with shots off the tee box, I could do with the ours, um, CGA is it, or CGA? And, um, so we're looking at having three senior members do the tee-off, so that is, we wanted to involve them some way. So May seventeenth, I, uh, volunteered, went to the lodge to assist Gloria doing, uh, RFP, which is a request for proposal for a new accountant. So I spent the morning with her there, we got that completed. May eighteenth, we had, uh, the P, uh, FCSS, we started with supper meeting at six, dot quorum at six forty-eight, so the meeting was called to order. The thing of note was the youth coordinator said that, um, the Boys and Girls Club at High River had requested, if could they come over and swim with the Balkan Youth Center kids for their swim time. And, uh, so we welcomed them to come over and swim, and we're we're hoping that maybe in the winter, we can go over and swim with Boys and Girls Club, which are kids over there, so kind of do a a share thing. Foothills is requesting external funding from our FCSS, when they come over, they do Specialized, you probably know more about it, Specialized. But, um, we feel that we provide the office, we provide the printer and all the paper and everything, so to us, it's kind of a win-win for both parties, so hopefully they agree with that. We had a closed session on, um, benefits and, um, came out of that, and we set our AGM for June fifteenth at six thirty at the FCSS building. And the Food Bank will, AGM will will follow that. May eighteenth, or also the Food Bank was right after that, so, um, motion was made on, uh, benefits as per the discussion we had in the FCSS closed. There are a couple of spots left, for anybody that's listening, at the Community Gardens, so if anybody wants to have a spot at Community Gardens, just give a hold of the FCSS office, and, um, you could become a part of that. On a note, I got, uh, we've hired Trone's Geomatics, I don't know if you've heard of them, they're gonna come in and do our topographic survey. I've had a meeting this morning, um, the minutes, Karen, there'll be new updated minutes coming, um, because now the design management's taking over the minutes, so there's a few changes, uh, to what they have here. Trone should be here June second to get started on that, um, geometric. Environmental site assessment is expected to be completed mid-June. Construction manager request with qualifications has been sent out, and that ends May thirty-first. So after that, we'll do a request proposal on that, we will, they will, uh, go through the applications and shorten list it, and then we'll do interviews for our construction manager. And all this is paid for out of the seed funding and the loan that we already have received, so there's no money to, none of, no money has been asked other municipalities for anything, what we've done up to now to get things on going, but Marcus has covered all the costs for that. And, uh, we will be going, um, to do some site visits, uh, one is, one is today Tuesday. Thursday, we're going to McGrath and Raymond to visit the lodges down there, GMAA, uh, did build those. And, um, then on Mon- the following Monday, we will be going to Red Deer and Innisfail, and they're a little bit different designs. And, uh, then we have to set our moves, so it's a lot, a lot happens in a short period of time, so we need, they need to know, we know it's sixty rooms, and now when we see these rooms, because it's it's hard to look at a piece of paper and figure out how big these are. So it's gonna give us a lot of insight to to what our final request would be.
Okay, any questions for Judy? Hearing none, thank you. Margaret, over, coffee.
Um, I had the library meeting, uh, Balkan Regional Response to Elder Abuse Council meeting, and tomorrow evening, I have that Health and Violence Foundation. That's it, and I was not able to come, unfortunately, I was out of town.
Okay, any questions for Barbara? If not, thank you very much. Now, to me, I only had a couple, um, I had a meeting, we had a meeting with the, uh, mayor of Leffbridge and a couple of senior people to discuss the, their, um, waste handling facilities and and potentially, you know, maybe moving their waste to somewhere else. So you kind of gave us a breakdown of of the costs that they they pay and how much, you know, again, I I use a a poor terminology when I use it, but, you know, quite often municipalities support, um, functions and don't really tell you the ratepayers the exact cost of what it is. And as an example, Leffbridge, what we use is that they charge resident on Leffridge sixty-five dollars a ton for disposal of the waste. Fifty of it is go straight to the disposal of the waste, and fifteen goes to post-closure and and upgrades. They charge, um, but he said that it really costs them ninety dollars a ton to have a landfill, that's the true cost. You know, eighty-five for the sell, the work and the upgrades, and fifteen for the, so I guess it's a hundred dollars, you know, it's eighty-five and and fifteen, so a hundred dollars. So sometimes we kind of give our ratepayers a misconception of what's going on, but he also said that, you know, when they bought the property from Kedon, they put a five-dollar per house cost per month to go strictly towards the financial cost of purchasing that property originally. And it, yeah, the timeline's in twenty twenty-five, so that'll come off, but, but anyway, he was saying that they originally had eighty thousand tons of garbage, and they've lowered it down to sixty-five, because they removed the organics and they recycling up it. So they're doing a great job of trying to reduce the amount of, uh, costs that cost them to to bury it. But, um, anyway, we had a great discussion, of course, you know, they always say when and where and how much it's gonna cost, but, uh, great discussions, Leffbridge on it, so hopefully that'll be one that they'll move forward. Um, I too attended the the meeting with the, uh, Marcus Foundation, and I, again, I was very impressed, uh, I always pick on Lori, because I've picked on Lori since grade nine, so, um, I'm not gonna probably stop. But, um, you you did a great job, Judy, really tried to explain, uh, the only bad thing about any of that is sometimes you get really get, there's so many acronyms, that you kind of get caught caught on, and you go, which one did she just talk about? Anyway, I mean, there's so many acronyms, but I I appreciate you read out those words in the long hand, it's it's pretty hard to, but, um, again, exactly what Lyle said, you know, for years, we've tried to do different things on our own as a municipality, to try and get some s- s- senior housing in our community, and then we went back and said, maybe the Marcus Foundation would be a good one to candidate to to do something. So that's when they took it on and and got some steam behind them and going, and and again, you know, hair to them, and if there's something that they need, or you can support them with, you know, personally, or as a, in the municipality, I think, you know, hopefully they'll bring it back to us and ask for support. I know Kim hasn't got anything else to do, so we can, I'm sure.
Yeah, nothing else has come up lately.
But anyway, but no, personally, I I really, you know, appreciate it, and, and, you know, after being in different facilities, I have a sister-in-law in Leffbridge, and mother-in-law, that's one Saskatoon, you know, substantial different sizes, and, you know. If we think our our hundred-square-foot ones are bad now, you should see my mother-in-law, a brand-new one, that's only same size or smaller, and pays five thou- or three thousand dollars a month for it. So, anyway, um, then I had a SEWAS executive meeting, and I've got a SEWAS board meeting, and a solid waste, uh, that I don't know why today is for tomorrow, I guess, so. So I'm having problems with my, being able to get something from the county and forward it on to Karen, so I have to get that corrected so that we can, it gets kind of stuck. I can see it and read it, but I can't forward it or, or print it.
If you can't get it under your email, like, go to the backside and get it.
Kind of strange, but anyway, so that's, that's, again, a couple come up this week. But thank you very much for, for participating. Do you guys have any questions for anyone? Okay, thank you. So we just need a motion to.
The motion to accept the council report is presented.
Thank you, Lyle. Any question on Lyle's motion? Here now, call questions, favor. Anybody opposed?
I was moving this.
So it was.
We, we are on camera, you know.
But you know, you're supposed, you're supposed to ask that, so if somebody did change their mind before the thing was closed, you're supposed to ask for and against it. I sometimes don't do it on some of the, especially on financial, and I think we should do it straightforward.
And then when you thought.
But anyway, thank you. We'll move on to the Activity Management Report.
I just like that you grabbed your arm. No one else could do it, I'll do it myself.
There was a, a hook come out.
Nobody was here.
Everybody's had a chance to read my report. The things that are outstanding will be outstanding until we can get a chance. I, with the tenders for it, I do apologize. I, I have a message to reach out to Neil and Adam for some more information on the incentive side of things. But we haven't been able to connect yet, also quite busy with where the world is right now. So hopefully we'll get some more information. I have got, quite, done quite a bit of research on what was available online through the bylaw side, so. And it looks like it's got some, some stuff administratively that is, is, is interesting to work with. So hopefully we'll be able to get some more information for you guys fairly quickly. Unless there's any questions on that, we can go to my.
Okay, any questions? Okay, move on to the RC report.
So again, everybody's had a chance to read it. I've been talking to most of you fairly extensively over the last couple of weeks. So we have the Whispering Wells, tender is now on the ATC. We're in, we have a site meeting tomorrow with anticipated contractors, and it should close in two weeks. So we should have some back, hopefully, and not the next council meeting, but the council meeting after that for approval. The sports courts drawings, we're doing a final review, and we have a meeting on Thursday at three o'clock to go through those for any final changes before those get ready to be posted for tender. And again, those will be posted and brought back to council for formal approval once we get the quotes. We've been working with the owners up in the, in the industrial to finish some of the final drainage wells in there, should be just about done. Those, those have been out there, Black East pulled most of their equipment out, they have one small hole out just to do some finishing work. So the majority of that contract is, is now complete, so. And the, we did have a fall claim through insurance come through. Someone slipped and fell on one of our streets with, during rainstorm. So we've been dealing with RMA insurance for that. And it looks like it's gonna be a fairly straightforward, no claim because of just being water on the street. And I have, that we actually do want to grow in the intensive water to try to mitigate that risk. So hopefully that will, will fairly smoothly. Again, Transport Canada reached out to me about the railroad crossings. There was two deficiencies on the main crossing that fell into the railroad's jurisdiction. And then on the second street, there was deficiencies on the rubber padding and on the asphalt on the sides. Although we need CP Rails permission to work within fifteen feet of the tracks, we are the road authority and are responsible for the asphalt to the tracks. So we have to coordinate with them to do that. As I said, we're gonna try to do that with Grindstone when they're in town. So as, as of this point, Transport Canada has just reached out to us with the deficiency list. We have to formally respond in writing by June fifth of what our intentions are to remedy it. We'll just put down that we will do that as part of our, our summer program in conjunction with CP Rails.
Is that along with the rubbers, is that CP Rails?
Yes, yes, so, so they level, level rubbers, and then we have to repaint to, to them. So.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, yeah.
It's a very frustrating process.
Yes, and it does look like they've gone in and leveled a few of the paths already, so. Which significantly helped the cross already, so. So we're working with that one. The rest, pretty straightforward. Tomorrow, we have that meeting with the hockey organization that's interested in bringing it to your, to tier one. I lost on the tier two.
To junior.
Junior A team to Vulcan, so hopefully that presentation will go very well. We're not a hundred percent sure about how to accommodate all the expectations, but if possible, we'll try to make work that would be very beneficial for our community. So hopefully you'll be able to attend. As of right now, they both may be zoom, I'm not sure one got called away. They were hoping to have one person in person, but they weren't a hundred percent sure, so we'll.
What time's that one tomorrow?
That one's at three o'clock tomorrow.
And here?
And here, yeah. Various community member inquiries, obviously drainage, the slip accident, and we've been dealing with some issues of folks driving quads around town. Where Gabby's working on getting that fixed up. There was some misinformation that they could just drive them around there. It's public roadway, you're not allowed to drive a quad around town. So.
Can you drive a small truck?
Yeah, you can drive a golf cart. You know, you can't have a golf cart either.
Oh, I thought we, I thought we talked about this and you said the other opposite last time.
No, no, you know, no golf carts. Point, you can.
I thought it was just, it had to be A to B.
A to B, A to B to exit town, not to drive around town. So you can drive it, you have to walk it across any highway, and, and you have to be leaving town. And again, county has a state road, so you can't ride on their roadways either, so. And the council member inquiries, quite a few questions on the Marcus Foundation from some of the members that couldn't attend. And then the RCMP meeting that's coming up. And from my understanding, that's just a public engagement requirement that, and Constable Provost came in and then just requested that put out that invitation to anybody that can attend. And they're gonna try to hold those in various places, so the first one's being in chat. Janice's last day in the office will be Thursday. So just for council's information, we don't generally do this, but in order for all the staff to be able to attend on her last day, we're gonna have a, a quick lunch here in the council chambers, and we're just gonna close the front doors for an hour, through, through the lunch hour. We don't generally do that, but we're gonna close the door so that no one has to sit out there during, during lunch. Unless the counselor wants to come and sit at the front desk for an hour through lunch, but it might be easier to put a sign on the door. So yeah, we're just, we're just gonna get all the staff together for an opportunity to thank Janice for everything she's done. Because she, for many years, has written all of our paychecks. And I, I know everybody appreciates that, so we're, we're gonna do that on, on Thursday. The formal meetings of interest, obviously, the update meeting is at the Legion and that committee out there. And meeting went fairly well, there was, I see a little bit of disappointment in the conversation, because they, some of their first initial drawings are they wanting to be able to get access to the five thirty-four. And they're going to acquire with transportation if they can, but I don't know if that'll be successful, just based on any conversation we've had in the past.
Go ahead.
And the only reason why they want access to five thirty-four is for the delivery trucks mainly? So that it's not coming, they're not all coming to the residential section?
You know, transportation, quite a few years ago, they wanted to close arenas, both sections. They matter of fact, they wanted to close the road into the hospital and bring them in off of the.
Off of the avenue.
Off of that avenue, First Avenue, in behind the.
By the tri-services.
By tri-services, in that, that way. And they were, closed the two intersections by the fire hole, the newest one for P and H and one for Richardson.
And if you look at the original report, they wanted us to close First Avenue.
Yeah, and we could keep, we could keep the one into the subdivision open, but the rest are all closed. And the one going to back, you know, down to the golf course had to come around behind the other end, you know, because of the distances between. So the, the philosophy might have changed, but I, I do understand what their philosophy, why they're thinking. Go ahead.
Was that when they closed the second entrance to the subdivision?
Yeah. And it came as a study from transportation that they gave to us with guidelines that if we do work in those intersections, they are to be closed. We're not upgrading them or making them new, and they weren't gonna let any new ones on. So I passed that information along, but we also gave the contact information to Darren Davis, so that they could have that conversation. Because it may make sense to have delivery vehicles go directly off of secondary highway, similar to the ambulance, so.
But the, the other thing too is that they've, they've, and issue two is that sometimes they'll say, well, we'll give you permission to, you know, turn right off. So you'd have to come in somehow and then go east and then turn right into. That, that's another red bone and contention, because, you know, all it stops with is that yellow line, and nobody ignores.
Follows it?
Well, I shouldn't say nobody, a majority of people ignore that yellow line and what it means, and so. But anyway, I, I, when I read that too, I, I questioned whether they would be successful, but it doesn't hurt to ask. You know, but were there, any, any other questions about the land? I mean, other, it should be a fairly nice piece of flat land.
Yeah, and really, they were fairly happy with the locations of infrastructure, being that the sewer and storm are available on two sides of water. It's a little bit harder on the main street, on the, on the main drag side, because it would have to go into the highway. But we also have a six-inch water line available, which is more than adequate for a building of that size. So that was all, pretty happy with that. The location of power and gas seems to be convenient off of J, Juniper Road as well, so. And there is a main, through the base power feed to the backside of the hospital, that could also be extended over as well. Standing on the site, they were pretty happy with.
And also, we, at first, Cory thought there might be problems of the distance from the helipad. But it, it isn't, it doesn't affect that. We did also ask about coming in off of, you know, by the.
The backside of the hospital.
Yeah, but that's private domain, right?
Yes.
But there is, there is an opportunity to, to, well, I mean, I was, sorry, I was gonna say, like, as a walking path. We, we did have years ago, a discussion with the, how the, or the hospital, about putting a walking path between the hospital and the facilities that were being, you know, looked at in the past. And. There, there was a very good appetite to, to, to do that. You know, and matter of fact, they, you know, some of the discussion was, is it could be a wider walking path that theoretically could take a.
Accommodate an ambulance.
Accommodate an ambulance. But that was just between the two, you know, discussions. But again, people change and philosophies change, but I think it's something that should be looked into, you know? Make a good enough walking path that they could expand it to a drivable. Well, I mean, you think, for them.
We won't put lights on at all.
The exact, the exact same thing of, of what, you know, we talked about earlier, for them to come out, drive through the, you know, the three blocks or two blocks with that subdivision, all the way around to get onto the highway, to go two blocks to hang right into the hospital. If there was a way of accommodating the two, why wouldn't it be looked at, at least looked?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Okay, any other questions for, questions for Kim? Okay, if not, somebody wish to move that administration, Judy? Any discussion on Judy's motion? Here now, I will call them questions, favor. Opposed? Did catch you. It's scary.
Rock, you're on top.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, one more motion, Will.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting, please.
Thank you very much, eight twenty-five. Great, thank you very much.
Should have waited, thank you, is it?
Yeah, I'll wait for Richard. Yeah, for those that don't know, Richard's father-in-law has had some health issues and, and potentially he's not, he's not doing so very well. And so that's why he is here, not here, and Cole, again, too, is not here because of farming. And, and since we're still live, anybody that knows, I said, Poochee, he passed away, so.
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday, last Tuesday?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, so. You know, he was our administrator for a period, I can't remember how many years, but a few years.
Ken.
Ten years. Anyway, okay, anything else? No, thank you very much, everybody, for attending.
And vote on this motion.
Oh, did, did I vote on?
No.
Okay, oh, I was.
It's in your ears.
Oh, it's scary, thank you, sorry, I didn't have a checkmark, anyway, my brain is mush sometimes.